Thank you for joining us for our October eighth Springdale School Board meeting. To start us off, I'd like to welcome Raimi Cassidy to the podium. He's going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Uh, yeah, so a little bit about myself. Um, I'm a senior at the Don Tyson School of Innovation. I think I'm what most people would consider a high achieving student. I've taken thirteen of the available AP classes at my school. Uh, I have a thirty-five super score on the ACT, but that stuff's boring. Um, I have heavy involvement in the band program at my school. Uh, I'm a euphonium player. Uh, and then the thing that I think is most interesting about me is my involvement with robotics in the community. So I'm on what's called a first tech challenge team. Um, Route Negative One is the name of it. And although each year we're given a game task and we design and build a robot, that's all fun. Uh, but the more important part of what we do is service for STEM and first in the community. Uh, so for a few examples of what we do, we volunteer at a summer Lego robotics camp that's held by the University of Arkansas each year. Um, I'm also a mentor for what's called a first Lego League team, which is the level below what I do called first tech challenge. Um, that team is, last year was entirely comprised of students with developmental disorders, um, like autism. And then this year, about half that team is comprised of those students. Um, so getting to help those students learn about things like programming, design. Um, and then on first Lego League, there's a project section which teaches them problem solving. So last year it was about the arts, this year it's about the ocean. So how to solve a problem with a different theme each year. Um, and that's, I think, what I'm most proud of is my service to STEM and first in the community. And talk about a few other things, if you want.
Talk as much as you'd like. Tell us a little bit about, I read through, I was telling, like I was telling you before the meeting. It, it takes about twenty minutes to read through all of your accomplishments, but tell us a little bit about what, what I, what I thought was really interesting was where you want to go to school and what you want to do after college.
Oh, yeah, so I'm currently filling out the application to MIT through early action. Uh, but then through Common App, I'm also applying to a wide variety of other schools that are notable for their engineering programs. Uh, I want to do mechanical engineering and for a long time I knew I wanted to do engineering or computer science, but I didn't really know what field. Um, until I became a Formula One fan. Um, and I decided I want to move to Europe and work on a Formula One team as a mechanical engineer. Um, so that's my post-college plan. I'm sure it won't go exactly like that, no one ever, but that's my current plan. Yeah, that's my current plan.
How do you get a four point three three nine GPA?
Uh, so unweighted, it's a four point zero, so always. Um, four point three is due to the AP classes under the weighted GPA system. The, an A is a five instead of a four. So, yeah, that's why my GPA is a four point three three, whatever it is.
Whatever.
So what's your favorite class right now?
Right now, uh, AP Calculus BC is my favorite class. Um, I could also say band, but that's a final, it's not a class. It's a, it's an extracurricular technically, so I would say, um, Calculus BC just because it's so related to what I want to do in the future. Um, you didn't ask this, but in the past, AP Physics One was my favorite class I've ever taken. Um, just because that's another reason I decided I would enjoy mechanical engineering. That's because it involves a lot of physics and the real world applications of even an AP class in high school is really cool to see.
I feel smarter just studying your, I, I know what a euphonium is now, I'm not gonna lie, I Googled that. But I wasn't exactly sure what that was.
Not many people do. It's like a small tuba for anyone in the room who doesn't.
There you go, great, great analogy. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Your parents, sir? All right, thank you so much for being here and obviously we're all extremely proud of you and thankful that you are going to be a Springdale graduate and excited to see what your future holds.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thanks for coming.
It's a crazy thing to watch.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for having me here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to our agenda for the evening. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
So a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to our consent agenda for the evening. Any questions or changes to the consent agenda? Entertain a motion for that. A motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that brings us to the front part. Um, this is National Principals Month. And to start us off, I'm gonna give a little introduction of what that entails and what that looks like in Springdale. And then we have a special guest that's gonna join us at the podium. So National Principals Month is, um, October. And during National Principal, the Principals Month, we celebrate the outstanding dedication and unwavering commitment of the principals in Springdale and their invaluable contributions to the education community. These except, exceptional individuals serve as the cornerstones of our schools, guiding students and educators with passion, integrity, and under, and unyielding commitment to excellence. Springdale principals go above and beyond their roles as administrators. They are not just leaders, they are mentors, advocates, and champions of education. Their tireless efforts ensure that every student has access to a safe and nurturing learning environment where they can thrive academically and personally. From fostering a positive school culture to making tough decisions to support their staff and students, Springdale principals exemplify resilience and grace under pressure. Their dedication is truly commendable. And it is through their leadership that our schools continue to flourish, making a profound impact on the lives of countless students. This National Principals Month let us express our heartfelt gratitude to these remarkable individuals who play an instrumental role in shaping the future of our community through unwavering commitment to education. Let's give our principals a round of applause. Board, does anybody want to add to that before we move on? So, obviously, we're super thankful for our administrators and, um, we know that, um, without their leadership in each of our buildings, our district wouldn't be what it is today. So we're all super, super thankful. So enough of me talking. Riker, would you like to join us at the podium? This is Riker, and he's going to help us. Riker, tell us where you're from and a little bit about yourself, and then we'll hand it over to you.
Okay, well, hello, my name is Riker Burkett. I'm a fifth grade student at Westwood Elementary. Fun place. I've gone there all the grades that I've been to, so.
What grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Okay.
Okay, and I think we should celebrate some of our principals.
Me too.
I am excited to get to be here this evening, celebrating the amazing principals in our district. Principals are important for many reasons. I think principals are worthy of our respect because they control the school. Without them, children would be running everywhere and chaos would ensue. They ensure everything runs properly. That's a lot of pressure to make sure everyone is safe. They also make sure we learn. Without learning, our lives would be a lot harder. We wouldn't be able to get good jobs if we didn't learn. Reading, writing, and math, and science. We use the skills we learn at school every day in life. That really makes you think about how important principals are. Principals also care a lot about their students. They love us by hiring good teachers and counselors to support us. When we are having a bad day, they calm us down and talk to us about our feelings. Springdale School District is blessed to have the best principals in the entire world. Now let's celebrate them and the hard work they do for us every single day. Bear with me here now, because some of the principals have challenging names, but what can I say? My full name is twenty-six letters in it, so here we go. Paul Greep from Harbor High School, Justin Swope from George Elementary, Amy Harrison from Don Tyson School of Innovation, Mary Mulligan from Bayori Elementary, Michelle Hutton from Elmdale Elementary, Jason Jones from Springdale High School, Mindy Hayer from Childers Knapp Elementary, Kim Simko from T.G. Smith Elementary, Dr. Allison Beiford from Hellstone Middle School, Kimberly Crumbie from Westwood Elementary, whoop, whoop! Shelley Butley from Shaw Elementary, Lynn Ryan from Walker Elementary, Dr. Regina Stuman from Sonora Elementary, Dr. Michael Shepard from Lakeside Junior High, Stacy Ferguson from Turnbull Elementary, Dr. Curtis Gladden from Southwest Junior High, Dr. Kobe Davis from the Archer Learning Center, Dr. Jeff Flanagan from George Junior High, Dr. Todd Lofton from Central Junior High, Kristy Norwood from Bernice Yunn Elementary, Chelsea Jennings from Sonora Middle School, Megan Rojo from the Early Childhood Center, Patrick Scott from Helen Tyson Middle School, Dr. Shelley Pogue, um, from John Tyson Elementary, Jonathan Buchanan from J.O. Kelly Middle School, Heather Cooper from Parsons Hills Elementary, Andy Acuff from Monitor Elementary, Carrie Ferris from Jim D. Rollins Elementary, Molly Brock from Harp Elementary, Michelle Dozier from J.B. Hun Elementary, and Jill Jackson from Jones Elementary. Thank you to all of the amazing principals and Springdale schools. We appreciate all you do for us every single day.
Hey, so I just have to ask you a question before you leave. What do you want to do when you grow up?
I think I want to be a zoologist, sir. I am fascinated with animals. And I think they're really, really cool.
What's your favorite class?
My favorite class at school? Hmm, I think I'm gonna have to go math. I am really good at it. I think it's fun. And I think it's very important.
You just read thirty-one, thirty-two principals' names in schools with zero mistakes. It was flaws.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. These are two hard, hard acts to follow. We're coming out of this meeting lazy. Raimi and Riker have set the bar high today. All right, well, I've got one more and then I get to turn it over so I can get out of the spotlight, but, um, so next up, we have an update on our DC fly-in, um, where we went and met with the congressional delegation in DC um, here a couple of weeks ago. Um, you know, it's always good to go and hear from other business leaders and political leaders from Springdale, from across the state, from across the nation, um, and get to, to hear from them. But on the flip side, we get to share, uh, what's going on in Springdale schools and, um, we get to let them know what we have in the works and what our goals are and what we kind of want them to know about. So it's a beneficial trip, I feel like. Um, it's always, um, a blessing to get to go and be a part of it. Um, if anybody else has anything that they would like to add, I know, everybody, everybody went, right? Everybody that's here went, so if anybody has anything they would like to add that, um, stood out to them from the trip or any of their takeaways from the trip or anything like that? The mic is yours.
I have just one thing.
Yeah?
It was important, uh, I think, as a board for, especially Senator Bozeman and Congressman Womack, to see your dedication to, to take your time away from your businesses. Because all of you are focused on really investing in Springdale with all that you do. To take your time to go there and to, to focus on communicating to them the difficulties that, uh, well, that quite frankly, that our public school works with every single day. Because federal, federal issues really trickle down to the local district. And our efforts today are focused on those federal issues. And if they don't understand, and they're really good, so I don't want to, don't sound difficult in any way. But if they don't understand how federal decisions impact locally, then that's on us. And so you were really articulate and really kind to take your time to do that, as opposed to just me doing it alone, having a board to communicate that. You as, uh, individuals who did that at that time, I'm really appreciative, uh, as a, as a superintendent. So not many, not many superintendents have boards like you. It would take your own personal time to do that. So I just wanted to say thank you. And Springdale should be really proud to have a board that is so committed. So again, from me to you, thank you. And I think Congressman Womack's, his words about you and your commitment rings true today. And I appreciate he is that, that you're such a solid board. So anyway, that's mine.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Dr. Cleveland, I'll turn it over to you for, looks like the cornerstone event.
Okay, Trent, are you available, sir? Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, Leanne, School Board. It is October, and October is always fun in Northwest Arkansas. Uh, October, as you know, um, is the cornerstone event hosted by the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation. Uh, and all of us have been many times, and I hope you will go again, uh, this, uh, October. It is the twenty-fourth at the Apollo on Emma. And just so you know, the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation Cornerstone Society honors those individuals whose hard work and dedication have significantly impacted the face of education in Springdale. These honorees have laid the foundation for educational excellence in Springdale for which future success of our schools and community will be built. And I think that's really indicative of the, uh, people this, this year. So this year, the cornerstone recipients are, drumroll please. The Springdale Public Schools Education Board of Directors is honored to welcome these fine folks. Mike McFarland is the twenty-twenty-four patron recipient. Jim Crouch is the twenty-twenty-four alumni. Carol Turley is the twenty-twenty-four retiree. And I think this one's really special and fitting for our Springdale Bulldogs, who are having a great year this year, by the way, uh, in football. Uh, the twenty-twenty-four Legacy Award is Kevin Johnson, Coach Kevin Johnson. So that'll be very nice to do, uh, to have them there. Uh, I believe that it is on the twenty-fourth, I was looking to confirm that, I believe it's the twenty-fourth at five-thirty. Uh, usually what happens is five-thirty, you kind of mingle, chat a little bit, catch up with everybody. And I believe the program begins at six is usually how that happens. Uh, so very proud of the work that Mr. Steckline and the Education Foundation do. Is there any questions you have on that topic? Okay, um, next topic will be the Ozark Media Arts Festival. Uh, it is happening in downtown Springdale today and tomorrow. If you get a chance to come down and watch, you'll see hundreds of young people with cameras roaming all over downtown Springdale. Uh, it is pretty fun and exciting. Uh, very, very proud of Springdale's leadership and workforce alignment and workforce development in the state of Arkansas. This is Ozark Media Arts Festival's thirteenth year. Isn't that impressive? So over thirteen years, we have brought over ten thousand people from across the state and the greater Midwest uh, to Springdale here to meet industry professionals, to learn, um, to compete. So, uh, the Ozark Media Arts Festival connects education to industry in the areas of media arts, like filmmaking, broadcast journalism, photography, entrepreneurship, graphic design, et cetera. Uh, so this year, we're anticipating about six hundred total attendees. I hope you all can come tomorrow if you'd like. Uh, the closing ceremony is tomorrow at, I believe, one-thirty. Uh, it's at the Medium, the former art center of the Ozarks Building. So if you're out and about and would like to come by, it's always fun to watch kids being creative. So, uh, do you have any questions on that topic?
I'll just say, you know, being in downtown, I got to see a lot of that today. And these kids are just walking in every business and talking with random folks and doing a great job and interviewing folks. That, it was really nice to see today.
Most of that was well-received, most of it. So sometimes when people see cameras, they're like, uh-uh.
Is there a theme, particular theme this year?
No, this year, we're, we're leaning into the mission, which is connecting education to industry. Uh, and I think one thing that's really important, it's free to enter, it's free to attend. The professionals that are there are donating their time, nobody's paid. So I, I challenged all the young people today. I said, I want you to take a moment and go ask the adults why they're here. And so that gives them good perspective of really understanding that we are servant leaders, we have a servant's heart. And when you see these professionals who are there taking two full days out of their work schedule to come in and pour that into young people, that really speaks to the nature of Springdale and really the state of Arkansas. Okay, thank you, appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Board, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for the opportunity to visit with all of you guys tonight. Um, I've had the privilege to serve as part of our instructional specialist leadership team um, that partners and supports all of our schools through the lens of learning for all of our students. This year, we have structured our support into three tiers to help meet the various professional learning needs of our teachers and staff. So you can see the bottom layer of this support starts with learning walks. The idea is, we want to be out in our schools and we want to engage directly with our learners to see where they are in their learning and how we can support them as they move forward. From all of these learning walks, we are gathering information to help us know what we can do to help support when it comes to job embedded professional development. So if we see that there's curricular or program training needs, or just to amplify best teaching strategies, we use the learning walk information to help us with that. And the final step, the top tier of all of this support is coaching cycles. We want to make sure that we partner with all of our teachers to make sure that they know that they're supported where they are as learners, to take them to that next level to support their students. So the purpose of our learning walks is really to provide an opportunity to view learning in a classroom without evaluation or judgment. We want to just be out in the classrooms, connecting directly with teachers and with students. And we want to see that learning is just an action, we're looking at best practices. We're trying to also be critical through the idea of a learner-centered approach. So we're not just stopping at teachers, we're looking beyond what the teachers are doing and we're really engaging with the students in their learning. So by conducting these walks, we're really looking at how we can support in each of these three tiers. As Albert Einstein once said, "We as a team are remaining passionately curious and continuing to deepen our collective understanding of authentic engagement." So far, we've conducted approximately five hundred and forty walks across all of our classrooms in all thirty-one of our buildings, and this has consisted of eight total teams. We have thirty-plus district-level team members that are, um, together in different teams. They partner with the schools and they go out and visit in the classrooms. And this is all aligned to John Hattie's work through Visible Learning, as well as Robert Marzano's New Art and Science of Teaching work. And the focus is authentic engagement, as we have in our center of our logo. So what we really focus on with the learning walks at the beginning of this year and for the duration of this year will be in the grades model, the focus on goals and on evaluation. We know that through everything that we do with the New Art and Science of Teaching, there has to be clarity for our students and for our teachers to know what our learning is, and that's where our goals come in. It answers our first question of our teaching and learning process, which is, what are we expecting our students to learn? And the evaluation connects that to how will we know that they've actually learned it? So these two pieces are what we use, and we look specifically under the student evidences. After we've done all of these many walks, we have approximately ninety percent of our kids that are engaging in the goals and in evaluation. And this is an amazing growth for us. This allows us to work together with all of our schools and see exactly where we can continue to grow and deepen our understanding. So this learning walk process has helped all of us grow collaboratively in understanding our authentic engagement, which is our overall goal for learning this year. We will continue these walks to help us partner with our schools and plan our work through the multiple tiers of support to ensure learning for all of our students. Do you guys have any questions? This is new this year, yes. We realized that as a district support team, in addition to just partnering- to just partnering directly with building leaders to ask what their PD needs were, we realized if we went out into the classrooms and engaged with the students, that it would help us understand where they were, depending upon whatever initiative the building leaderships were looking at, or if it was just different strategies that they were needing. Okay? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Always, Dr. Burrito. Always very pleasant and always impressive. So thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to give you a final update on the free and reduced meal applications. So I'm gonna click this clicker here. However, before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to say a big thank you to all of those who helped. In the words of the late Pat Ellison, "It's we, not me." So all of us together, got together, child nutrition, communications department, technology staff. Technology was huge this year, helped us really reach a lot more families. Call center staff, treehouse pantry staff, social workers, councils, nurses, teachers, administrators, secretaries, registrars, parents, students, and I'm sure I missed somebody, but in just more and more and more, just a lot of effort there. As of today, we have reached 73%. This percentage represents the number of students who have qualified for free and reduced meals based on household incomes. And the goal has always been the same, is to first contact every family member that we can get in contact with and at least give them an opportunity to complete a free and reduced meal application. And then some of those benefits we went over the last time that we met here, just student benefits is access to free and nutritious, we sometimes forget about this, breakfast and lunch. So we forget about that sometimes. And then free SAT vouchers, free ACT waivers, free college credit options, free summer camp opportunities, and free and reduced rates on college application fees. Big, big benefits there. And then also, just some district benefits and family benefits, funding for SROs and CSSO programs, nurses, social workers, one-to-one technology, and much more.
I didn't realize until I read that the other day about that SAT and ACT and college stuff.
Absolutely. Any questions about free and reduced meal applications? Any questions?
Thank you for leading it.
Yeah, it's, it's always a fun time. I'll just say that. I mean, we learn something every year, and we get better at getting better every year. I mean, this year especially, I remember talking to a couple of social workers, and they, they just had these little, these little, sometimes the little tweaks are the big tweaks. You just do a little tweak here or there, and it just makes a huge difference. So very thankful for all of them.
At the end of the day, it's allowing you to capture funds that are otherwise go unused.
Correct. Yes, additional funding as well.
You get them identified that may not be, if you weren't pushing it hard, you get them identified.
Right.
To get their benefits.
Sure. I, I think it's-
There's no reason not to.
Serving kids.
Absolutely. Okay, so next on the agenda is National Bullying Prevention Month. So just want to remind everybody here and everybody out there listening that October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and Wednesday, October 16th, is Unity Day or Bullying Prevention Day. On this day, please wear orange to show your support for bullying prevention. And this is a little flyer that we think we gave t-shirts last year. So if you have a t-shirt there, and you'll also be getting a little pendant this year that you can wear as well if you don't want to wear an orange shirt. It's a big deal, this Anti-Bullying Day. I hope to partner it a little bit with CSAY so that we can really continue that great partnership there. So if anybody, and we're also developing what we're calling a bullying bystander training. So those, any of those bystanders that actually see it, then what their responsibility is also to report it. So anyway, any questions on bullying? Okay? And then next, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Brian Treat from the Springdale Police Department. As Sergeant Treat comes forward, I want to take a moment to highlight the incredible partnership he and the entire Springdale Police Department have fostered with Springdale Public Schools. Their continued dedication to safety and the well-being of our students is, and staff is invaluable. We invited Sergeant Treat here tonight to provide us a brief safety review of the school resource program, officer program. So please join me in welcoming Mr., I'm sorry, Sergeant Brian Treat.
Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for having me. Started to ruin the role that we had with great speakers, because I am not a dynamic public speaker by any means. So I won't lie, I'm a little nervous up here. We have a list, this is all of our SROs right now. We do have 15 currently that are working with the district. That is besides myself, and then Sergeant Matt Ray. I'm in charge of the junior and senior high SROs. I have one at each junior high. We also have one at each, at each middle school. And then I have two at Springdale High, two at Harbor High, two at School of Innovation, and one at Archer. So for the total, we have 15. We do work with the CSSO's at the elementary schools. If there's any issues that, that require legal action or law enforcement response, that, that their policies won't allow them to, to take care of, then, then we also partner with them. So you'll see that each SRO also has other elementary schools assigned with them, and that's to support if they need anything there. As general rule, obviously, the, the first, this is with the CSSO's, our SROs are there to keep the kids and the staff safe. That's number one above everything else. Beyond that, we, we try to practice the triad, which they're counselors, educators, and then finally, law enforcement officers. Our main goal is we try to, try to work with these kids and get them to understand that we're just people, just like they are. I was formerly an SRO at Southwest Junior High. The relationships I made with staff and then with students, still today, we have probably, I have about a dozen students that are employees at the police department in various capacities. And it's, it's by far the most rewarding position I've ever had as an officer. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Glad to be here. I believe the Springdale Police Department's the finest big police department in, in the state. And it's because of the quality of the people that make up the department. You all are always professional, and you're kind in how you do your work. And you're certainly kind to our students, and you help us be safe. The, the interesting thing that when we work together, and of course, I had to brag on Matt Ray as well, when we do have situations where there are threats or things outside of our control, oftentimes these national threats or hopes or whatever, could you talk to the board a little bit about maybe how you all work when those kinds of things happen? Because not always does the public understand. They may think you're doing nothing.
A lot of times, thanks to social media, it, things spread like wildfire. It's not like when it used to be word of mouth. So whereas typically in the past, where we would hear something straight from someone or a third party that specifically overheard a threat would report it to us, the difficult portion now is it, is it gets shared on social media. And so we'll get reports that come from, some not even from the United States. We'll get them from out of state. We'll get them from other cities, maybe in different parts of the state. But just because someone read it on a social media post, they anticipate it came from local. Regardless of where it came from, we investigate it. Of course, if we need to, we get our detectives division involved if we have to. We have investigators that can pull up IP addresses, and they can track down where things came from. A lot of times, we've already found that out before anything is ever actually even released. And that's where it becomes difficult, because it expands, and it's hard to control it once it's expanded with false information. So probably the best thing I could ask is to all the parents and students listening, go straight to an administrator or an SRO or someone that can help you address the issue instead of just, ooh, that's not good, and hit share. Because all of those shares make it harder to dig through everything, to find what's legit and what was fabricated and what's, sometimes it's even new, brought up again, something that we addressed maybe a year or even two years ago that was already remedied, and it's brought up again, and it creates a panic. And, and as we know, last month, we had a lot of students miss a lot of school. And what originally started it was not even a, not even a legitimate threat.
Well, I, I'll speak for myself. And I know when those situations pop up and we get notified of what's going on, it never fails that within typically a short amount of time, we get another text or response that you guys are doing this, and you're on it, and you're on all these steps that you're taking. And it's a huge blessing to have you guys in our schools and to have four kids in these schools and know you guys are there. Gives me a ton of peace of mind, and I know it does a lot of moms and dads and grandparents.
We appreciate that.
Thank you for being there, and thank you for doing what you do.
Absolutely. We, myself, and I speak for all my SROs, they enjoy what they do. They do care about the kids. The majority of us have kids in district ourselves. And we look out for everybody's like our own. And that's, that's what we're here for.
Some, some states are vocalizing things that happen, even with minors. Arkansas didn't have those.
Arkansas, we won't. And that's why you won't usually hear anything on the news when we do address an issue involving a minor. In Arkansas, we're not allowed to release information. There are, there are certain statutes or crimes that are committed that, that we notify the school administration office about, so they're aware, so they can address it from an administrative side through the school. But as far as releasing names and photos and information, we don't release that because we're not allowed to. And we don't want to have that student shunned for life either by posting stuff like that. Everybody makes mistakes, some different than others, but anything involving a juvenile, you won't see anything released. At most, it might say, hey, someone was arrested, and they may say it was a minor, but they will not release any details on, about them or who they were to protect them.
I think we all understand not to protect the kids. But I do think that some, that sometimes you need to at least make some kind of statement to, to let the general public and even the students out there know how serious it is. So whether there's arrest or not, there's, there was some punishment that, if you mess around doing this, this is what's gonna happen to you.
Word of mouth gets around enough.
I agree.
The students will see. And a lot of times, there will be something at least posted. It may say, a, a minor individual was arrested from a certain location or was charged with a crime, but they won't have anything to identify them.
No, that's not-
Yes. But, but we work hand in hand. Our public information officer, which actually is Sergeant Ray, and then our captain, right, that's in charge of the whole division, we all work together to decide what's best and what, what should and should not be released. Just, some things are better not released, and they cause more problems than it helps.
We've learned that vague statements are way worse than specific statements about a specific incident. Because specific statements about a specific incident, people understand. Vague is, if they don't understand it, they'll create sometimes a narrative that they do, which is incorrect.
Exactly.
You're just gonna learn those lessons.
But, but they are, the, a lot of the major crimes, there is a law that allows us to notify Dr. Cleveland so that the school staff is aware, and they can address it as far as if that student needs to be removed from public schools or not.
It's very kind of you to come and talk about this tonight. As Mr. Emerson said, which I believe the entire board is certainly appreciative, and, you know, even say by their, their actions. Thanks for your continued support, and thanks to the mayor and the entire, the entire city council and all the PD. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
It's been 10 years.
Having a birthday.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Cleveland. Quickly want to invite you Thursday to our 10-year celebration. We are going to start the morning at 8:30 with the Springdale Chamber Morning Brew in our PAC lobby, and then transition to a quick program in the PAC highlighting students from different pathways and graduates that we'll get to hear from, from the last seven years that we've had a graduating class, and then optional tours after the graduation or after the celebration. So festivities begin at 8:30. The Performing Arts Center program piece is at 9:30, and then tours around 10:30 or shortly after that. So invite you all to attend. I'm sure you've gotten the invitation, but I'll give you one more just so you have that. Questions about Thursday?
Do you have anyone special coming?
So we have, I do know members of the Tyson family will be joining us, and then business and industry partners that will be here, some former educators. I thought Dr. Rollins said he was making appearance. So yeah, we have, we have a documentary that our AV tech and film crew has created and done a fabulous job. So excited to share that with everyone to document the last 10 years and the journey and how far that the vision for Don Tyson has come in just a few short years. So-
Is it gonna be livestreamed?
It is going to be livestreamed. Mm-hmm. Yes, we'll begin livestream at 9:30.
Thank you.
Thank you for your invite, Harrison. I'll be out of there. Passing those out, I guess, Mr. Ellis?
Uh-huh.
While that's all happening, we've got an Industry Day going on at the same school. It should be a fun time.
Good evening, Board. Yeah, following the same day as Ms. Harrison's 10-year anniversary at School of Innovation, we'll have our fourth annual Industry Day at School of Innovation. So it's a really good tie-in to the programs that we host there, as well as across the district. Ms. Kelly Williamson has done a fantabulous job of reaching out to industry partners. Last year, we had 50 industry vendors there, and that venue will have 95 this year. So everything from skilled trades to, the young man on the pledge mentioned the Formula One racing team. So we'll have the Haas CNC team there, that's a Formula One team. One of the gentlemen who's there actually running one of the CNC machines manufactures some parts for some of those race cars. So that's a pretty good tie-in for us. He's actually spoke to you here on one of the board meeting nights, Ben Vandehue. And so it's a really great opportunity. It's a good extension of, I think, the, the school district's vision for the three Es that we continually talk to our students about. Also, it's a great way for students to see our programs that we have in Springdale. So we have currently 1,000 students signed up to attend this event. They'll be coming through on the east side, where all the diesel program and the advanced manufacturing and equipment side are. And they'll, we'll also have some Army National Guard there. We'll have schools from afar away as Berryville and Clarksville who will attend. And so we'll have a large venue of students. That also helps to recruit to our secondary career center, so any student from the region can attend those programs. So we'll have a, it's more of a hands-on application that we have. So we'll have different venues going on inside that Industry Day from advanced manufacturing with some automation and robotics, some CNC machines, to some basic welding skills, to down at the diesel side of it, we'll be doing some different hands-on equipment. Mr. Burkett will be there with students being able to rotate through our heavy equipment. We have companies traveling from as far away as Kansas to bring equipment in and sit with our students, which I think is a really awesome day. So if you happen to go to the 10-year anniversary and you want to peek out and see what's happening on the east side, we'd love to have you come take a look at what we're doing. So it's a huge day for us, and I hope you can make it. You have any questions for us?
Sounds great.
Okay. I need Riker here to list all 95 names, so we'd be here for a while.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, next, uh, portion. Mr. Emerson left, yeah. We have a full offer for the 1457 East Robinson Avenue. It's the PDC building of 2.3 million, I believe, through Gibson Real Estate. Should everything go through and the appraisal come back appropriately, we should close on October 26th. Those funds would be- back appropriately, we should close on October 26th. Those funds would be, as we discussed earlier, be appropriated for the former building that we call the ASP building that we purchased. And so we're going from about 11,000 square foot building to almost a 21,000 square foot building. So that will certainly help us. And the sale of the 20, what was it, 26 acres or so of Don Tyson, we should more than clear enough money to purchase the building, to pay for the building that we purchased. So it worked out. So thank you very much, Board. I'm hopeful that this will go through. I don't see any reason why it won't, but I will certainly keep you updated. So this resolution would just be to allow me to sign the paperwork on the closing date if that, if we actually go through.
I think there is a window if they need additional time of 30 days or so, but I believe that day for the additional time was yesterday, that passed. You all that know more about real estate contracts than I do understand that. So I think that need for the additional 30 days is no longer necessary. So I think just pending appraisal, we should close on the 26th. Does anybody have any questions? Do we need to make a petition?
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion by Randy and a second by Michelle. All those in favor? Opposed?
Good job, Mr. Ramos.
I'm ready to be president now.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland. The first item on my section is approval, seeking approval of the September 2024 financial statements. Those were issued to you in the, as part of the agenda. Just to make a few comments about the September financials, we're just a little bit ahead of where we were at the same time last year as far as our collections for overall, all different funding sources that are unrestricted. So we're at 18.15 versus 17.98 last year. On page two, or actually page three, where it talks about the expenditures, the only item that I did want to comment on is on the vocational education. You'll see that's skewing just a little bit high right now at 36.25%. But there's a very good reason for that. We have received, we are in the process of receiving some funding from OSD for some purchases for our career tech. And so embodied in that amount is where we have paid for some items that we paid for in September that we'll be receiving our reimbursement back this month and December, I mean in December, in October. So you'll see that level out a little bit as we go forward. So I just wanted to explain that particular item. Are there any questions that you have on the financials?
On the debt service, I noticed we didn't have any. Is that?
Hasn't the time to pay that? We pay that twice a year. So we haven't been billed for that yet. So you'll see that come forth pretty soon.
entertain a motion?
I'm moved to approve the financials as presented.
A motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Olmey to approve the September 2024 financial statements as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Cleveland asked me to give an update on our Alloview software program. We have a standing meeting every Tuesday at 3 o'clock that we're working with our representative. And so as we go through and we're, we're just trying to fine tune everything. So our intention is to have the managed portion, which will be the platform that was exhibited to you at the, at one of our kind of learning sessions. We hope to have that rolled out pretty soon. One of the things that they don't have that we're working on is they don't have a playbook like a, where we can send out to all of our users just to kind of step by step how to navigate through the program. And so that's one of the things that we're working with our representative for. He's reached out to some of the school districts that they have worked with. This one that comes to mind because of some other things that we're working on is Nashville Public Schools in Nashville, Tennessee. So we're working on that part of it so that we have some materials for those end users to have in their hands so that it's not just completely overwhelmed when we start stepping through that program to show it to everyone. So that is one of the key things we're working on right now that we're on hold for the managed portion. They are also Power School, who is the owner, the oversight company of Alloview. They are doing some updates so that not only are we able to pull in the expenditure side of our balance, you know, our financial statements into Alloview, but also the revenue side. So that's something that they are in the process of rolling out. And so we're, as part of that, we're sending them information so that they know what needs to be added for our, our purposes. The other thing that we are also working on is as we work through in the allocate portion of it is where we can tweak what our, what in a perfect world, what our funding is for all the different buildings throughout the district, you know, based on enrollment data at that particular building. And so we effectively write the rules for that and, and all it does is gives a picture of, in a perfect world, this is what the funding would look like, for instance, at Westwood Elementary based on their student population. So that is one of the things that Dr. Smith is, really has the knowledge that we're using to kind of create those rules because as you know, those are different from state to state and even from school district to school district. So we're taking that funding matrix that y'all have heard about many times and writing that into rules so that we can easily change the data as far as enrollment and it'll automatically kind of tweak what those numbers should be as far as how we allocate our resources. So that's one of the, that's kind of where our focus is right now as far as this Alloview implementation.
So in summary, that means we know how many students we have. We'll be able to identify how many staff members we typically need, whether it's certified and classified.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And so we should be able to be more efficient and we'll be able to see where maybe one school has more staff than potentially necessary and one school maybe is understaffed.
That's correct. And also based on the needs of the students, you know, because as, you know, our populations of student needs across the district vary from building to building. So that is all kind of figured in as well as funding rules.
So for our school board, instead of being able to see financials just once a month, they'll be able to, on a daily basis, be able to log into Alloview and be able to see in real time our financial picture, right?
Yes. It'll look almost like a, like your ga, fuel gauge is kind of what it'll look like where you can kind of see where, where our spending is today on this fuel gauge. So. Okay.
We've been talking about budgeting, the budgeting process. And so we, we believe in this next year, if you all are okay with this, we'll probably have a work, lunch alert, working lunch, maybe a budgeting lunch, a couple of those that you can come if you want to, if you want to, and we can go through the budget process. Would you like that maybe in the, in the spring, summer or something like that? Okay. I think that would be a good thing. And as we do that, then you'll be more informed and it'll help us as well because we'll all be the partners in having it used in this system. And should we, after the legislative session, have a new funding formula, especially if it's based off Tennessee, Nashville, Tennessee is already using this, we'll be miles ahead because Alloview is already there. So that's a good thing.
Yes, sir. They've, when I spoke with Brandon today, I believe they've worked with Nashville Public Schools for at least about six years. So he was not the representative on that account, but he's going to make introductions. So for me with the finance person at Nashville Public Schools and so that we can kind of see both sides of the coin, what it looked like before and kind of what it looks like after that new funding formula was implemented.
With this new funding formula, I know you all know this, but currently we're based off last year's three-quarter average. That's how we're funded, meaning the number of students we had based on three quarters of the year. All right? The way Tennessee does it and the way that proposed new formula will look is it's real time. So it's current year funding, which is really difficult to do. And so Tompkins and I went to co-op and listened to Mr. Kozar and he presented this. And so I had a lot of questions. The form of work I did at the state, I had a lot of questions. And didn't have a whole lot of answers, but what we did understand is that Tennessee is able to do it. So with that being said, having this, this program already based in Tennessee, it sure helps. I mean, we'll be, we'll be the ones that a lot of people ask. Thanks. Good information. Thank you. I appreciate that.
The next update that I was asked to discuss was positive pay, you know, just going back to that fraudulent activity that occurred on our account a few months ago. So positive pay has been fully implemented for us. It's working very well. And so we present them with a report that has six points of information on it. They, our bank's system automatically matches four points of that information. The only thing that is very important to us so that we don't have another, another fraudulent event like we had a few months ago, is that it needs to also be able to match the vendor. What's in our file needs to match what is presented to the bank. And so right now, the bank's software does not do that. However, what they are doing on our behalf is any check that's over a certain dollar amount, they're manually pulling that check and checking it to our file to make sure that that vendor is the same. So we're continuing to work through that process. I know the bank is working on some system upgrades to their system, which as, you know, as you know, kind of affects us and some of the reporting that we're sending to them. But I think overall, it's working very well. And then the very last thing I wanted to mention is property tax payment deadline is next Tuesday, October 15th. And so just wanted to give a reminder to that, to let you know that we also received an assessment report. It's not the final report. It's, I think they refer to it as the, after the EQ board assessment is kind of what they call it. And so we'll have a final assessment at the end of January. And so, long story short, they've identified about, let's see, let me find my note. They've identified additional $1.26 billion in assessed property in Washington County. That's not all ours, but just in Washington County overall. And so it should affect, right now, the projection is it would be about an 8.5% increase in our overall assessments for the school district. And so I was pleased with that number because it didn't hit that magic 10%. So I was happy to see that it was an increase. So we'll have more information available as that final report comes out at the end of January. Okay. Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Hello, Board and Dr. Cleveland. I've got a construction update. It's pretty short this month. So Central, they're still moving along over there. They've poured a lot of concrete. They've got a lot of the curbs in on the, on the parking lot. So that's a look of the exterior of the cafeteria that faces Huntsville. There's a view of the, the east side of the cafeteria. And then this is inside. So they're starting to put finishes on. This is the interior stage. A different view of the cafeteria. So they're, they're moving right along on this project. All the curbs are in. They're, they'll be, they'll be ready for parking lots here pretty soon. We're still on track for Thanksgiving break to move into phase two. So that, that week. And then we'll start phase three, which is just the remodel of the existing cafeteria and the kitchen area. Yeah. No, I think, I think we're in good shape.
Grass fires, maybe. Could you remind me what we're doing with the old cafeteria you said renovating?
Yeah. So that'll be phase three. So it'll turn into a media center. And then the kitchen that we had added before phase one started, that'll get took out and that'll become some office spaces and TV studio.
So phase two, Thanksgiving, phase three is still?
April, April. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we've got a deadline to be totally done, paid out, everything into the state and, and them to inspect. Southwest, this is just a view from the second floor. So they've got the curbs poured on the parking lot there. So you can see the views there. And that is set to be done in December. And then once that's done, we'll, we'll do final payout on that and, and that job will be completed.
You've not really heard anything about traffic congestion and it's been going okay?
Yeah, both, both schools, Central and Southwest, we, we modified their pickup and drop-off schedules. They've been going smooth.
I know early on, there was a lot of traffic all the way. Central especially backed up and around.
Yeah.
Maybe some board members might even heard some of that.
Yeah. So that traffic pattern will change at Central after Thanksgiving break. Todd or Dr. Lofton is going to send out a lot of information before, but we'll gain access to some of the front parking. So we'll be able to stack more cars on our own property and get them off of Huntsville and then exit them back out to either Emma or Gootenson. So that'll change. And then Southwest, it'll change also. Probably at the first of the year. Soon as this is done, then we'll be able to have all the parent drop off in the front.
Jeremy, on related subject, do you know the ETA on the Wild River Ramona that connects?
I, I know they're working on it. I can get an update and, and report back out.
Ms. Kinderley though, she's concentrating on that being open soon.
I'm excited for it to open, but I don't know.
I see somebody said the spring.
Spring?
I want to say, don't quote me on that.
That'll help us.
I'll reach out to Patsy Christie and, and find out an ETA on that, on that section because it will help our east to west traffic flow. We're working on preliminary budgets on several other projects at the Locke Building, the ASP Building, and then the baseball softball at both, both high schools. So we're working on that, trying to get that in, in budget so we can move forward with those projects. Do you guys have any, any questions about any of the construction? I know we've got final pay apps coming in probably this coming month for George Elementary. The hail damage on all the 18 campuses, that'll be finalized. And then I should get the final payout on Springdale High School this month. And on all, all of those, we do have a savings from the original contracted amount. So I'll have those amounts probably next month.
Jeremy, you talked about closing the Center Street a couple of times in a year. Have you got any update on that one?
No, I've got, I've got all the information and documentation that we need to, to close that. I just need to go meet with Patsy, get that to her. And then there'll be a little bit more we'll have to do to get to the planning commission. We are working with Fimple to close it temporarily Friday night for the game for security reasons for about four hours. So we're working on that permit with, with the city.
That was the police department's request, wasn't it?
Yes. Yeah. Springdale PD and then Athletics kind of got the plan together to close it down just for safety and security reasons during that game. So I got with Patsy. We've got an event permit. We've got it all filled out and everything. So we're working on that.
Are you going to be able to fence the property that we own there on Kansas and Center? Because I know people are parking there and saying they're going to block students.
Yeah, we'll put up a temporary fence there with some, just orange construction fence for that event.
at the Springdale High, Harvard High game this Friday, I believe Coach Fimple has arranged to have some, what are they called, risers?
Yeah. It's a, mm-hmm. Portable risers will be brought in for the bands to get up on, get a little elevation on them, and it'll keep them all in one, one area.
What about for the cheerleaders, Silver Stars, all those who play out there in the office as well? We can ask.
I'm not sure. Fimple's, he's been working on that plan.
Okay. If we shut that street down, do we have to have, like, staff on each end of it, or do we just put?
For the temporary?
Yeah.
The temporary shutdown, we'll just put barricades across it. Once we go for the permanent shutdown and, and get approved, then we'll take the asphalt out, and that'll just become green space for now, until we start the next phase.
Was it, you started treating, said that you planned that out there, or somebody will be out there and keep people from going through?
If the permit is approved, that's correct, that we'll have these streetblocks set up there. We'll be able to, we'll get that, we'll have our barricades, we'll have the parade, and that.
Yes, sir.
We'll be like that, and that'll be done.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Cleveland. My name is Valerie Hanna. I am the SEA President and a teacher here in Springdale. And also, I'm speaking for someone else right now, a very excited football fan as of this last weekend. Somebody, somebody loves the Chiefs and the Razorbacks, so. That being said, I was actually very excited because my son made it home. He is a college student in Florida, and he is now home indefinitely because Milton's about to take out his college. But he actually made it for the game, too, so that was even more exciting. Since last month, we were able to meet with our families and, for conferences, and really enjoyed that opportunity to connect with the community in that way. In the, at the end of September, we also had the honor and the opportunity to be invited to join a cohort of Arkansas teachers sharing data with the doctoral candidates at the U of A who are studying the impact of cell phones on learning and the various elements of the Learns Act. We were excited to be able to share our perspectives and learn with other educational professionals as we, as they continue their research. It actually was kind of nice, it kind of felt even a little smarter, because being at school board meetings, I felt like we had a little more information than others sometimes have. In watching the recent presidential and vice presidential debates, we've seen how prevalent the issue of gun violence in schools is on our national landscape. And we have talked with many teachers across the district who are very appreciative of the preemptive steps that in both safety and mental health that Springdale has taken to mitigate these potential situations. Obviously, the, the giant list of SROs and RCCSOs that was, you know, put up this evening, I, I have spoken with other places across the state that they don't have those things, and it's something that, you know, I am very glad that I get to take, you know, a pre, or, hmm, my words, apparently I'm not smarter than a fifth grader. But, you know, that, that's something that I get to take for granted here in Springdale. We are also very excited that we are going to be allowed to take 17 delegates to the Arkansas Education Representative Assembly in November. This is an opportunity for our members to engage in the process and to speak on our wants for education in Arkansas, and also to collaborate with other educators across the state. And finally, I kind of feel like Callie and I just keep getting really good opportunities, and we were selected to represent Arkansas at the NEA Minority and Women's Leadership Conference in Atlanta in January. And we are very appreciative to Dr. Cleveland for supporting our involvement in that so that we can attend. And I think that's all I have. There was a lot of, like, bouncing on topics, but still, that's all we have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other patron comments?
No, there's not.
Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Well, with that, we leave it there. Thank you for being here.
Yes. I think Dave right now is, uh...[1745.15]